... one ensures that the unit and its soldiers are never without official leadership, a continuation of trust, and also signifies an allegiance of soldiers to their unit's commander. Fire Chief Jonathan Goulding accepts the trumpet from interim Fire Chief Rodney Dover for the command of the Hollister Fire Department to ensure that the Hollister Fire Department is never without official leadership, showing our trust and allegiance to the fire chief from the firefighters at the Hollister Fire Department. The Hollister Fire Department is passing the colors of the last flag that flew at the Hollister Fire Station 1 while interim Fire Chief Rodney Dover was in command from Fire Chief Jonathan Goulding. There is a great symbolism attached to the ceremonial aspects of a change of command. It is with great respect that we honor our outgoing fire chief while welcoming our new chief in command of the Hollister Fire Department.
Chief Dover, you're not getting away daddy.
I was running.
So they're signing a, basically the statement that we just read and they'll be able to
All right. Then you raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Goulding.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right. Ms. Mayor, council members, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'm already double booked for the evening with the next council meeting, but I do appreciate and it's a big honor to me to take on the responsibility of leading these gentlemen in protecting this community. I have 25 years in the fire service. In my short time here, I've become very proud of the way they operate and I look forward to us being a strong team and providing the best possible service that we can to the community. So thank you very much for your trust.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can just say a few words?
Certainly.
Thank you. Chief Dover, thank you, sir, for your service to our city, not just as the interim, but for all the years that you served the City of Hollister. Appreciate it so much and welcome, new fire chief. Congratulations to you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I'd like to thank Dover. I know it was Dover. Yeah. The, well, we, you said it right. You know, this is special. Hollister is always special to me because it's where we live. But you know, these are, these firemen have always answered the bell and went above it. You know, going out with you guys, I see it, the interactions. It's not just putting out a fire, it's the interactions you have with the people. And so, yeah, you got a good crew to take over, to lead, and they got a good leader to lead them. So thank you, Captain, Battalion Chief Dover, and also thank you and welcome to coming back.
I appreciate it. They have a major incident that they're rolling out on right now, so they had to take off.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I just have a quick reminder. I need to remind everyone about the manner and decorum of our meetings and issue a warning in this regard. Meetings must be in an orderly and efficient manner without willful disruption so the business of the city can be conducted. While council is more than willing to listen to comments from the public, it must be done at the appropriate time and should be done up at the podium with a microphone so your words can be heard and recorded properly. There cannot be interruption when council members are speaking or audience members calling names, chanting, or yelling out. If you do so, a warning will be issued and if the behavior continues, you might be asked to leave the chambers. If too much disruption occurs, depending on severity, it may be necessary to call a recess, clear chambers, or cancel the meeting. I would like to ask for your courtesy and cooperation in this regard so it won't be necessary to take any of these steps. All right. So this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item that's not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining us via Zoom using a cellphone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, Mayor Casey. Our first public speaker is Darren Del Certo to be followed by Terry Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor Casey and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm one of the principals at 400 San Benito Street, the condominium project that was approved four years ago on the corner of Fourth and Main. And I'm asking for an extension. You gave me, I believe it was six months for the impact fees. I'm not asking for impact fees to be relaxed for the project. I'm asking for, as we sell the condominiums, to pay the impact fees, get a final occupancy, and then, you know, the residences would take occupancy at that time. When we got the approval, I think, I believe it was in February, so the weather was still pretty bad. Right now, the weather's starting to, you know, we're starting to get into summer, which is nice, and so the sales are starting to happen. Now, we've sold three, we've closed three, I have two in contract, and I believe the expiration is about another month or two, you know, talking with Mayor Dave. So I'm asking for an extension of paying the fees as we sell the condominiums per the conditions of approval that was given four years ago. So I'd like to be placed on the agenda the next meeting if I could. I'm not asking to relax any impact fees at all. All I'm asking is to pay the impact fees as we sell the condominiums there at the corner of Fourth and Main. I don't know if there's any comment or...
We can't comment.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next public speaker is Terry Thompson. You're unmuted and can you hear us?
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Terry Thompson and I am the project manager, Caltrans project manager, for the 156 Road Improvement Project. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and city council members for having me come and speak to you today. What I'd like to tell you about is the upcoming Union Road closure. As part of the State Route 156 Improvement Project in realignment to the new four-lane expressway, Caltrans will be temporarily closing a short section of Union Road in the city of Hollister. For, we will close that for approximately eight weeks. When we originally discussed this, we were planning on closing it for eight months, but due to the urgings of the city council and the people in the community, we were able to work with the contractor to get that down to eight weeks. Union Road is anticipated to be, anticipated to be closed between late June and late August. And detour maps will be posted on SB COG and Caltrans websites and other social media accounts, and this information will be available in both English and Spanish. I believe you have a copy of the detour maps in front of you. So during the closure, traffic will be detoured via San Juan Hollister Road to access SR 156. So to accommodate the increased traffic, so if you flip to the second page of those two pages, to accommodate increased, increased traffic, we will use a portable traffic signal at the intersection of Fourth Street and, and San Juan Hollister Road. And then also, if you look at the middle image, we will have a dedicated right-hand turn from Fourth Street, Business 156, on to SR 156. And then the last image will show, we have opened up, if you've driven in that area before, you will notice that there was a center lane that was closed off. We will be opening up that center lane, so we will have two lanes able to turn left off of Fourth Street on to 156. And the other things that I wanted to make mention is addition, actually, right after the reopening of Union Road in the late summer, we'll hit two exciting milestones. We'll be able to track, shift all the traffic on to the new SR 156. And the roundabout at Bixby will also be opened.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to move to extend again the speaker another two minutes. This is a pretty important conversation.
Yeah, so you can extend it, but you need to make that extension available to everybody.
Okay. Yes, Terry, did you have a bit more you wanted to tell us?
Yes, I did. The other thing is after the Bixby Road, I mean, after the Union Road closure, we will be temporarily closing Mitchell Road, which will be a smaller closure, and we do not believe there'll be a great impact because all of the traffic will be moved to the new highway. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't believe we have any questions and I'm not sure if we can have questions during public.
Well, there shouldn't be a lengthy discussion about this. It should be agendized if it's going to be a discussion, but a brief question would probably be okay. Just not a lengthy discussion.
Does anyone have a question? Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have several, and I would like to see this come before council as an agendized item before July 1, preferably, soon as possible. I'm sure that this is going to have a significant impact on our community at large for at least two months, and the more information we can get out, I think the better it would be. So that would be my request, not necessarily a question. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Rosemary Porras. Okay, it looks like she lowered her hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I want to thank you guys for listening to me. This is kind of awkward because I've never done anything like this, but I want to bring forth after-school programs. I know I need to speak to the Hollister School District and attend one of their meetings as well, but my son goes to Saravista and we used to pay for the YMCA service. We never asked for anything free. Now that California has this grant and a lot of, a lot of schools are using this, it is flushing out the middle class of people. Me and my husband have to work. My son uses the after-school program. But now for going forward to 2024 to '25, he no longer qualifies for any after-school program. He is not, he is not fostered, he is not displaced, we're not homeless, we don't speak another language, we can pay for service, but it's not offered any longer. So it puts a lot of us out, it gives us a big bind. I just feel like there's nothing offered and we need more programs. I don't know what else, you know, it's a touchy subject. We just need more resources. When reached out to the Saravista Hollister School District, the person in charge, by another parent, she told them that they should probably quit their job as a source, you know, as a solution, and that's not helping us. So I think we need more resources, we need some help, we need to have YMCA be able to offer paid services. I'm glad it's offered to those who need it, who are underprivileged, they do need the help, but so this is middle class and it's not fair that it's being taken away from us. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Those are all the public comments we have.
So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do any members of council have brief questions or comments regarding consent agenda? Do we have any public comments on the consent agenda?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for any of the consent agenda items.
All right. Do we have any members of council that wish to pull an item from consent? No? Then can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item 7.12 because I have the CEO of New Hope for Youth here, just like to do just introductions.
All right. Then can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item 7.12?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. All right, so let's go to 7.12, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing Use of 15,000 of City Council Budgeted Discretionary Funds in Financial Support of New Hope for Youth Programs and Community Outreach.
So this is my item, and I have, like to ask Philip Rodriguez to just come up and introduce yourself to city council. New Hope for Youth has a longstanding history in working in Santa Clara County and recently San Benito County with our high-risk populations. They do a lot of services for victims as well, highly trained in cognitive behavioral interventions, rite of passage, La Cultura Cura with joven noble chinas y cara corazón, and is just a wealth of information and hopefully a great resources for the city of Hollister. Philip, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Madam Mayor, do we not get an opportunity to ask questions before public comment?
Wouldn't we want to hear from them before we ask questions?
City Attorney.
Normally, council asks questions, then you open it up to the public, and then you come back for comments.
Okay, so we don't have anyone giving any kind of a report. Okay, questions, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. Thank you. So this is coming from discretionary funds, is it not?
That is correct.
And to your knowledge, how much money are we giving this organization?
The proposal is for $15,000.
$15,000. And do you know if we've ever given that much money out of our discretionary funds to any single organization?
Not that I'm aware of.
But it's allowed?
It is allowed within the policy.
And then how much money do we have for discretionary funds?
$50,000 per council member.
So if a council member was to choose to give $50,000 to one organization, does our policy that this council adopted currently allow for that?
That is correct.
And is this the most that we've given? I don't know if I asked that.
I believe for an organization, I would have to double check. We have had other items that are larger, but not to an organization, more for infrastructure.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Then would you like to come make public comment?
I can give them that if you want.
Does he need to fill out a card or is it, no? You can come on down.
I can add on to yours.
How's it going? You guys okay?
I'm not because I didn't know I was going to talk. So my name is Philip Rodriguez. I'm the founder and CEO of New Hope for Youth. It was founded back in 2013, and so we work with all, all sorts of families, right? Usually the families that are most underprivileged, who are in foster care, on probation, homeless, who are having troubles inside, you know, school. In San Jose, we're here now in your county. I live here, I've been living here for about eight years now, and we've been funded by the probation department to provide services to the probationary kids, to case manage them and their families, to provide life skills to them, pro-social activities, also do parenting classes with their parents that are ordered to do it with us. In San Jose, we're on like, we're on 12 different campuses, high school campuses. We provide prevention work inside the middle schools. We're doing street outreach, basically case management, intensive case management with intentional and impacted gang youth and those who are involved in violence or, you know, crime. We're also funded by the probation department in San Jose to do life skills groups and one-on-one mentoring inside the facilities. Outside the facilities, we're working with the re entries, kids that are coming back from, you know, SecureTrack, YA, Youth Authority, out going to the ranches, we case manage their families, we teach, we try to, we try to rebuild what has been broken from their time away from their families, right? And so we're also contracted with DFCS in Santa Clara County to work with duly-involved youth, both who are on probation and in foster care, to reunify the families, to get them out of the foster care systems. This money that we're asking for is, is for the population of, you know, families and youth and young adults who are not able to do activities. And inside Hollister itself, I mean, we've already done some stuff at, you know, San Andreas and Pinnacles, we've done some barbecues there, we're going to be doing another one this Friday, right? We're trying to meet the community, we've taken some of the kids out already paintballing here in your town, which was pretty fun, they got to shoot, everybody, they got to shoot field a lot, so that was really fun to watch. But we want to be able to provide a service for them, because summer's here, summer's coming, and we want to keep them busy, right? We want to be able to, you know, take them out into activities that they usually don't get to do and show them that there's other things to do other than what, stand on their block, get high, do nothing, right? We want to be able to provide that, right, to open their minds to new activities that will allow them to understand that, hey, you know what, there's a bigger world out there, you know? You know, we take them to, you know, the art museums, we take them kayaking, you know, we have basketball tournaments for them and that type of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have further discussion on council?
I think, you know what?
I'm sorry.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you're doing for Santa Clara County, but even more so, thank you because just like the previous speaker was talking on, public input, you know, we have programs out here and they are directed for a lot of the underprivileged. But you know what? Whether they're underprivileged, middle-class, or have money, they're still our kids, they belong to our community. So you're talking about a $15,000, I think we should make it even $20,000 and I'll put in five. I don't know if I can do that here or if I have to redo this on my G4.
They can amend it, yes.
Okay. That's, thank you again.
Councilmember Burns, you had a...
Thank you, Mayor. So again, I don't think we could ever put enough towards a program like this. I, I, I do have questions, I don't want to put the presenter on the spot right now, but I would like for him to maybe consider coming back before council and providing a presentation. I mean, I'd love to know what your budget is, I'd love to know how much of this now $20,000 is actually going to be spent on people within the city of Hollister, within San Benito County. I would like to know what your vision is. I understand you've been here in our county now for eight years, all, all important things that need to be known, I'd love to know more about what your business plan is. I'm not convinced $20,000 is nearly enough for what you're, what you're doing or what you're proposing to do. And, and this council, I believe, we actually did help to underwrite, was it youth recovery or what?
Youth recovery.
Yeah, and I mean, we, we put $150,000?
$130,000.
$130,000. So, so our kids are our future, I firmly believe in that, I don't think we could invest enough. And, and we as a council here, reoccurringly, there's nothing to do in Hollister. And, and my sense is, when there's nothing to do, they'll find things to do, and sometimes it wouldn't be the things we'd want for them to be doing. And so I know we've invested in other nonprofits, and so I, I do have an appetite. Unfortunately, right now, I have spent all of my discretionary money for another month, but I would be willing to throw some money towards this too for the greater good of our community as we move forward. But I would like to have a, a presentation come forward so that not only I hear it, because I can read staff reports, but most of our community doesn't read the staff reports, they have the opportunity to. But I would like to hear what you've done in other places and what you envision doing here, because it sends, my sense is, there's a pattern and a formula for success, and if you've got a track record in Santa Clara County, they may be first, but whatever starts there finds its way to us. And, and so I want the good things to find their way from San Jose to Hollister. And so I would like to suggest again that we bring this back. Sooner than later would be ideal, I know that we're dark the month of July, as I recall. And so by the time we get you back, if we wait till August, school won't be long from coming back. And so again, if there's a way to push this or pull this forward in June, I think that would be great, if, if the organization has the capacity and the council has the desire. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think he's...
I think at some point, I also like to introduce Philip and Philip's team to our Proxim Rex Director and potentially our police department. They work hand-in-hand in other jurisdictions, not necessarily here, but at least just a formal introduction.
And, Madam Mayor, did she have a comment?
Thank you. If anybody can attest to the work that these gentlemen do, it would be me. I work directly with them and my students do. Thank you for your service to our children and to the future of our city. However, I wear two hats. I'm an elected official and I'm a teacher. Has the county, do we know if the county has given them any money to work here in the county of San Benito?
No.
Okay. Because it sounds like they're working with probation, it's a county-wide problem. The problem that I have, without singling out a certain organization, we should not be in the business of giving any nonprofit $130,000, now from $15,000 to $20,000, or $25 million. That is dangerous and fiscally irresponsible. This is not your money to give, this is the taxpayers' money, and you have to keep that in mind. In my opinion, this council has been pretty reckless with spending, and we don't know what's to come in the future, so we need to be very, very cautious. And it concerns me that we're giving out 15K, 20K with no measure of metrics on those deliverables, with how, how do we know who's going to get what? So anybody can come and ask for 50K, and that might be contributed to somebody's salary on the taxpayers' backs. That's what concerns me. It's not a, it's not a good system to go down, especially right now, and for those reasons, I can't support it. Thank you.
I don't have too much to add. I am interested in having you come back. With Councilmember Burns said, I'd like to hear more about the program and what you're doing in San Benito County and the types of events that you have planned, maybe a schedule of some kind, just so we can, it, when you put money forward, it's nice to be able to see what, what's happening in the community and where it's going. And our discretionary funds are actually for the greater good of the community, and it sounds like you've been doing some really good work, so, thank you.
If I can request a roll call vote, Madam Mayor.
Yes, that's fine. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
With...
With the amendment of adding $5,000 from my... from my discretionary funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, can we do a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Casey?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1 with Vice Mayor Resendez opposing. All right, we're gonna move on to council business. Uh, we're gonna have a discussion item 8.1 regarding the local preference ordinance for affordable housing. Maybe have a staff report.
Yes, Mayor and Council. My colleague Jen Thompson is online, and she's gonna be leading this discussion.
So just a moment, we're gonna share the screen and get the presentation going.
Good morning, or good evening, Mayor Casey and City Council. I'm just going to share my screen, so let's just take a moment here to get it pulled up. Okay, so the, the item tonight is a discussion of a local preference policy for affordable housing in the city. This is something that the City Council expressed interest in a few City Council meetings ago. And city staff has started working on the policy, but they do have some kind of higher-level, policy-level questions for the City Council. And so that's what we're looking for tonight, is some just answers or input on these questions. So, before we go into the actual questions that we're looking for answers to, I do want to provide a little legal background just so that we can set some expectations. Um, any local preference policy must prioritize all residents equally, regardless of the amount of time that they've, they've lived in the city. Um, and this comes from case law. So the Supreme Court has many times upheld the right to interstate travel and migration. And they've specifically ruled that policies based on the duration of a person's residency infringe on the right of travel and are therefore unconstitutional. So, that being said, the city can establish local preference policies as long as there's no amount of time requirement, so amount of time that the, the person has lived in the city prior to being granted that preference. So, this is just a summary of the input that we're looking for. What types of projects should this policy apply? What, how should the eligibility be prioritized? How is local work defined? And then if there's anything else that the City Council wants to add, and I'm gonna go through each of these in just a little bit more detail. So first off, um, you know, how do you want this policy to apply? So should it apply to affordable units that are for rent, that are for sale, or for both? And then, staff's thought is that it would apply to all affordable deed-restricted units, but is that, is that what the City Council's looking for? Eligibility priority, this would be how those preferences are allocated. So, this is staff's recommendation on the screen, but we're, again, looking for your input. So the first priority would be households that are currently living in affordable deed-restricted units, but they are overcrowded. So there are more people in the unit than there are available bedrooms. Uh, the second priority would be to those households that both li, already live and work in Hollister. The third priority would be those households that work in Hollister. And the rationale for placing that above number four, those who live in Hollister, is that the idea that it would reduce traffic if there are individuals already working in the city, that it would make sense for them to then live in the city. And then the fourth priority is eligible households that live in Hollister. And these are, again, staff's recommendation at this time, but if there are other priorities that you're interested in seeing or in different order, that's what we'd like to hear about. And then, the last question is, how is local work defined? Is this individuals who just live in, or just work in the city, in the city and county? Or is there some way to apply this to remote work if perhaps someone works for a company outside of the city, but they themselves work from home in the city? Um, so those are our specific questions we'd like to hear from you on. And then, of course, we're looking for any other input. If there's something that you don't see here that you're interested in, including in a, a local preference policy, then we'd like to hear about that as well. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have before we get into public comment and discussion.
Do we have questions? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. When we're talking about positions, does that, and, and we're talking about local, one of my questions, one of my bigger concerns would be that we have affordable housing. Um, and I, I don't know if, I, I know that this city pays a reasonably good wage. I believe the county does as well. But I certainly don't know that we pay a strong enough wage that our firefighters, our police officers, our schoolteachers, our, our service people, whether they be, they work for Safeway, or you pick the, the venue, whether they make enough that they can afford rent, let alone enough to afford rent and find a way to save enough income to eventually become a homeowner. And so, I would like to see how we can make this work for that group of people as well. At the end of the day, doesn't matter how much we pay people, if they can't afford to live here, the likelihood is, at some point, they will leave to go somewhere else for employment where they can, at some point, own a home. And so, I, I don't know how this is applicable to that, or if this is a different path for another conversation, but that's one of my concerns. And then, I, I will say that I think you've covered the rent and, and purchase. And so I'd like to know more about how that works on, as I recall, the affordable housing requirement is for, is it 55 years? And, and so, or is it variable on project to project? And how that would be applicable? And so, those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can answer the second question. The number of years is dependent on the type of project in that whether or not it's for rent or for sale. So that, and that's established by state law. So that wouldn't be something that we necessarily include in the policy. Um, and then with respect to the wage for, you know, what I think of as like a workforce-type housing, it, it depends. I, I don't know, I can't answer your question specifically just because I don't know how much those people make and what, what are their salaries? And also, the affordability calculation is, again, also based on state law. And it's, um, so I don't know how those individual types of job salaries compare to what would be considered affordable under state law. I don't know if Jamila can answer a little bit more about that, or if that's something that we can bring back at the next meeting, that we present the policy. But, and I think it's really gonna be dependent on the individual salary and also what type of housing they're, they're applying for.
Any other questions? I just had a quick one for you, Jennifer. So we're talking about owning, renting, and then you talked about deed-restricted units, and that was the recommendation, was the deed-restricted. I'm just wondering, listening to Councilmember Burns talking about the workforce housing, and it's more of the missing middle. It's like, where does the affordable housing line draw on? So if, if we have that they're not low-income or very low-income, if they're moderate or whatever, whatever that missing-middle piece is, is, are those typically deed-restricted or not? Or, I'm just...
It depends, again. It, it likely they are even moderate, because a, a lot of times, the, those, those affordable units are being offered in return for something, some benefit to the developer, like density, you're, you're all familiar with the density bonus. And so, whenever that occurs, or whenever they receive some benefit under state law, and in exchange for providing affordable housing, they are required to deed-restrict the property. So even a moderate affordability could have a deed restriction on it, just depending on the circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's the only question I had. Do we have public comments, City Clerk?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
All right, so do we have any further discussion or deliberation? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Jennifer. Thank you for the presentation. If you can, can you go back to the, oh, I wrote it down, eligibility priority slide? Thank you. So I do see, I just see some challenges here, Jennifer. Maybe you can help me. Households currently living in overcrowded affordable units, if they're affordable units, they're not supposed to be overcrowded. I would imagine that they go by certain standards that they have to abide by. They can't, you can't just have more people come live in an affordable unit, or else you'd be breaking that, those standards, I would imagine. So I don't know about that. That's just my lay thought process here on this.
I, I think there are, there could be circumstances where there are no requirements. And we say, I use the term overcrowded, and I put it in parentheses because we would have to define what that means. So, you know, maybe it's that there's a family of six in a three-bedroom house, maybe, I, I don't know, what would be considered overcrowding, but we have to define with that.
But if we, but not necessarily classified as affordable unit, I guess. It could be any unit. We could...
Well, I, I think the idea there is to be, to give someone who's already a family, a household that's already in an affordable unit, an opportunity to like, upsize, basically. I think that's the idea of that first one.
Okay. Number two, I, I just don't think that we could say that they already work in Hollister. Maybe give them, yeah, priority, but most of the people don't work in Hollister. The majority of the population works outside of Hollister. So I don't want to limit somebody that's not, not working here in Hollister. These are just my thoughts. You can take them and come back with them. And then, eligible households, again, I guess it ties into three. The last one I thought was okay. The only, I think my biggest concern with this was that when we have people on Section 8 waiting list in other communities, then they will then move here because there's an available unit. Because I know that happens. So, let's say somebody's on a Section 8 here, but a, a unit's available in Los Baños, they'll move to Los Baños because there's an available unit. So, that's what I was trying to avoid with adopting this policy. So I think that...
Yeah.
If we keep it simple, if you already live here, then you're good. Those are my thoughts.
So you prefer to eliminate the work, local work component? Is there, are there other council members that also...
Yeah, I think we're gonna have more discussion. You'll, you'll get more input. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you. I respectfully have to disagree with the Vice Mayor as it relates to live, and, live and not work in Hollister. I think historically, if you look at the wages paid in Hollister, they have historically been less than in Santa Clara County, for example. And so, I would like to reward people by having them both live and work here, because number one, they're in all likelihood making less income already. And number two, it's gonna reduce some number of people that would be commuting, that would, others would indirectly benefit from just the fact that they're not on the road. So, so in my mind, I, I think living and working Hollister would be a prerequisite and, and an important factor for me. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Okay.
Thanks.
If, if we're gonna take that route, then I think we have to look at getting more specific about at least one family member. Because if you say you have to work in Hollister, I mean, we could potentially have a stay-at-home mom that doesn't work, and then a dad who doesn't work here. Or you can have two people that don't work. Then you're gonna limit those people. And they should qualify if they don't work. So that would be everybody on Section 8 here that's living in Hollister. I think it just gets really complicated. And maybe you can, I don't know what other cities are doing, and maybe reach out to the Housing Authority of Santa Cruz, because they're the ones that help us with Section 8. I don't know. It's, it's getting pretty complicated quickly here.
Okay. I think we could certainly look into, you know, what other communities are doing. I know that a number of them have local preference ordinances, so I know it can be done and done successfully. I also agree with Councilmember Burns. As far as the working in Hollister, I'm aware of even our own city staff that commute in from Los Spanos because they can't afford to live here. So that's who I see as, you know, eligible households that work in Hollister. That's who we're, we're wanting them to come and be able to live where they work. So that, to me, is important. And I agree with the idea of getting them off the roads and letting them be able to work closer to home. I don't, I, I think that's it. That's all I, I have. Did you have anything?
Yes, I have something. You know what, I was, I was looking, and it's like, what about our, I mean, our, our staff, of course, and it's not to, to discount any of the community, but I think of our first responders. Because back in '89, when everything hit, it's like, everyone had to take care of their own cities. And if we have to have people come in from other cities that are trapped someplace, instead of them being able to live where they work. So I think that that's a, this is, I don't know if this is like a point system or how, how this eligibility is gonna work. But if, if it's, I think first responders and teachers, I don't know, how do you do that to give them eligibility also in this? I don't know if it's something the council's willing to throw in there. But, uh, I think they're all far pretty good. As far as, that's as far as owning. As far as renting, I think it's pretty much analysis and covers it and pulls it all in, tightens it up. So thank you.
Councilmember Burns, did you have something?
Yeah, I think I would prioritize households that live, that work in Hollister. And then, and then it would be live and work in Hollister. Cause I think if we are trying to get people off the roads, trying to make it easier for the, for them to have better quality of life, it'll be, it, it's just nice to live and work in the same area as a priority.
Any other comments, or do we have a direction then?
Mayor, I have a question, more than a comment, I think. So, um, I believe just recently, and I saw, and I believe it was within the city of Salinas, and it was their school district, that just built some affordable housing, or is in the processes of going to build significant housing for their schoolteachers that would be qualified because they have a challenge in filling those positions. And so I think it might even be helpful for us to partner with others that we might not traditionally look at. I, I mean, I've, we've talked about public safety and I couldn't agree more. But I also think our schoolteachers provide a incredible resource for us. And so to maybe see what the school district's thoughts are in regards to something of that magnitude, to see what, what works. Because I'm sure there are, uh, you know, under the old days of the Redevelopment Agency, there were a lot of different ways to, to make these things happen. With that going away a number of years ago, that certainly limited one option. And so, or alternative. And so I, I think we need to look bigger and better, but, but this is certainly a good start. And, and I guess my question is, how much, how many of these units do we currently have that this could be applicable to once we drop the hammer or the gavel on this?
All good questions. So, um, I agree that maybe getting a little more input from, you know, looking at what other agencies are doing, just to see if there's anything we'd want to add, change, or include. But yeah, bringing something back, and then we could look further at it. I like the idea of including some of the things that the Councilmember Burns had just mentioned. So do you need more from us, Jennifer, as far as being able to move ahead with, you know?
Well, I think if the direction is to return with more information, then I don't need anything more. If the direction is to return with a draft policy, then I think we do need to know a little bit more about what types of projects this would apply to. And then also some, an answer to the what is local work question. But if, like I said, if the direction's to come back with more information, I think these things can probably wait.
What's the will of the council? Do you want more information? You want this to come back again for informational purposes?
Mayor, I think the city manager was gonna weigh in, maybe?
Thank you. I just wanted to invite our Assistant City Manager up for a moment, Rod Powell. In response to one of the questions that Councilmember Burns raised, I think he can provide some context on the project in Salinas.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to share some perspective from my prior position before coming to Hollister as Assistant Community Development Director in Salinas. I'm familiar with the school district's move to provide employee housing. A little bit of the background is that that was a development that was already in progress by a developer. And the school district was having trouble retaining their teaching staff in their district, and sought to purchase those units from that developer under a private deal. The city's involvement became the element of authorizing workforce housing, employer-sponsored workforce housing that was beyond the typical ag worker housing that is, you see being developed in jurisdictions. So there, it did result in a code change for the city of Salinas. But the deal was primarily brokered by Superintendent Burns from the Salinas Unified High School District. He would be the best resource to reach out and get information from, and we could certainly do that. And then I could also reach out to my former colleagues in Salinas and bring some information back to you there as well.
So is there a desire then to bring a more robust conversation around this then? And bring back more info? So Jennifer, I think, um, yes, we're, I think the consensus here is that we could use some more info before we move forward with an ordinance, so.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to eight point two, informational report on fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, quarter three budget monitoring. Let me have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We're having the presentation loaded up on the screen right now. Our Admin Services Director, Casey Astorga, will give the presentation, and I'll chime in with some comments as well. Mr. Astorga?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, Casey Astorga, the city's Admin Services Director. And I'll be, as City Manager mentioned, he and I will both be presenting and available for questions here. Tonight's recommendation is for the city council to receive the informational budget monitoring update for quarter three of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and provide general feedback or direction to staff. As a reminder, this fiscal year covers a period of twelve months, starting July first, twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, of twenty-four. This is a third quarter, or Q three, update covering a nine-month period. And our city's fiscal and budget policies require us to provide these quarterly updates to the city council. So that is what tonight's, checking off that box. As we've discussed before, the economic indicators that we're seeing for the current fiscal year, the economy, we use the word stable, however, that does call out that minimal growth. Staff is seeing that with our resources, as well as our consultants that are working with us to monitor not only Hollister, San Bernardino County, but certainly the region and the state at the same time. Again, there is no confirmation of a recession, according to the economists that we're working with. However, there is only nominal growth, so we still see that in some of our revenues coming in. Households continue to prioritize necessary purchases only, and to delay discretionary purchases, partially because of the economy, including that inflation variable. And the costs, such like their utility bills increasing, just within the past few months there. Also, that final bullet point of the cost of borrowing money, also known as interest rates, remains high. So those discretionary projects, or potentially the purchase of a vehicle or a property, have also been delayed. Next few slides, we'll look at our summaries and our projections. On the revenue side, as a reminder, our general fund revenues, which is our, are one of our larger funds, that is comprised of our sales taxes, the property taxes, the TOT, the transient occupancy tax, also known as the hotel tax, permit, license, user fees, charges for service, franchise fees, franchise fees, et cetera. Sales taxes, we do again have that consultant projecting a flat economy for twenty-three, twenty-four. Pretty, pretty similar prediction for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, with that idea that a normal economy will not return until fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. With that final bullet point, with the addition of our new hotels in town, our TOT revenues how are, however, are stable because of that new business coming to town. We saw this slide in a different version in our prior quarterly two update, or mid-year update. And the series of columns that have been added are on the left side of the screen. You'll notice most of those columns fall beneath zero, and then there is that yellow column that falls above zero. So that is showing that all of the regional counties nearby, Santa Cruz County, Monterey County, San Luis Obispo, as they compare to Hollister, and a Central Coast bullet point. In quarter four, so the year-over-year change in quarter four, which is the last three months of the calendar year, you saw that the economy, generally speaking, took a step backwards. A, a negative growth of anywhere between one to two to two and a half percent. San Bernardino County was included in that. You'll notice that yellow column, which is Santa Cruz County, they had positive growth in that quarter over quarter, and that is partially because of new businesses opening, quite frankly, and specifically in the automobile car sales industry. This summary also coincides with the very top-line item here of this general fund revenue, our budget, our actuals, and our projection. So that is a taxes line that we talked about in that previous, previous slide with the columns. But this is looking at all of our general fund revenues with that bottom line and our adopted budget for twenty-three, twenty-four being just over forty-one million dollars. There is the second column entitled fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, quarter three actuals. So that is through nine months of activity. And we've also added the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, year-to-date actuals, which will be up to this current month. And you'll notice there's a significant difference. Part of that is the timing of when we receive revenues, whether it's a check from the state or a check from one of our partners, and then the accounting of that. So we wanted to include that just to show where we are year-to-date. However, there are still several outstanding payments that are due to us. We expect to collect those revenues in full, which is where you see that final column on the right, which are our expenditures, again, just slightly under budget as well, as we protect the year-end expenses. This is where you see general fund expenditures as a total. Again, that left column, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, adopted budget. In the four different categories, a grand total of just over forty-nine million dollars in general fund expenditures budgeted. And you'll see the progress as you move from left to right, with that quarter three year-to-date spend of thirty-five point three million dollars, which represents seventy-two percent of the general fund expenditures that have been budgeted. Again, that footnote, given the current data that we have, the rate of spend, we do anticipate that we will land somewhere between forty-six and forty-seven million dollars for our total spend. And that again coincides with a adopted budget of roughly forty-nine million dollars for the general fund. Now if we look through the lens of the department summaries. So we looked really specifically at the general fund on the revenue expenditure side. But if we look through the department-only, all funds, all activities considered, all funding sources considered. And so you see on this, department-level data shows the summary data based on department, and includes activities supported by all of our different funding sources. The data that you're gonna see, again, covers that nine-month period, July first, twenty-three through March thirty-first. And we'll go department by department here at a high-level summary. For Administrative Services, which includes Finance, HR, and Risk, a budget of three point one, almost three point two million. Year-to-date spend, two point three, which is seventy-three percent of that budget. Airport, including some of the capital costs, just under a six-million-dollar budget. Year-to-date spend, just under four million dollars. That is sixty-six percent of that entire program, with that budget footnote that our capital expenses are mostly offset by grant revenues for our airport program. City Attorney's costs, a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget, currently eighty-nine percent spent. City Clerk, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars in the budget through nine months, fifty-eight percent spent. City Council budget, which includes both the compensation for the council members, as well as discretionary funds, et cetera. The total budget is six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, total year-to-date spent at forty-six percent. City Manager's office, total budget just under one point two million. Year-to-date spent, six-hundred-and-forty thousand. I apologize, I'm using the phrase year-to-date spent, this is through quarter three spent. I want to make that correction. So through quarter three spent, that is a fifty-four percent spend. With that highlighted services and supplies, that bullet point there, calling out the, the cost for services for our executive recruiter are included in that line item. Our Treasurer Office, forty-one thousand dollars budgeted, just under sixty percent spent through nine months. Development Services Department, just over five million, five point one million budgeted. We are approximately eighty-eight percent spent, four point five million dollars. However, there is that footnote that talks about our agreement with our third-party vendor. There is an association with the increase in revenue, as we do have an increase in some of those expenses. But also, on the accounting side, staff is working, finance staff is working with the department to make sure that we are capturing costs in the proper line items, which is why you see some discrepancies with the, the budget amounts versus the actual amounts. So that is very much an accounting mechanism, as well as a budgeting technique mechanism. Whether or not certain projects or departments, or, excuse me, divisions were included as part of Development Services, that's an evolution that we're all working on right now. But again, eighty-eight percent spent through nine months of activity. Our Engineering Department, seven point three million dollars budgeted. Our spend through quarter three is just under one point nine million, or twenty-six percent. And we do have that active recruitment for our city engineer. Again, the same type of conversation about the Development Services Department, where it's an activity of accounting, budgeting, et cetera. Same thing applies to engineering. Our Fire Department, right around fourteen million dollars in the adopted budget. Our quarter three spend is just under eleven million dollars, which equates to seventy-eight percent of the budget spent. Again, that bullet point, talking about the, the request to look at Fire Department overtime specifically. We, we continue to project, project it roughly around one point seven, probably just a hair above one point seven. But that'll be our ballpark estimate for those costs, again, with our overtime budget being at one point five. And we see that footnote below about historical overtime costs. Our Information Systems or IT Department, just under two million dollars in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget through quarter three. They're at nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand, which is roughly half spent for the department budget. And we did fill our Assistant IT Director position in April of this year. For Parks and Recreation, we have roughly a six-point-seven million dollar budget. And through quarter three, it is about two point two million dollars spent, or thirty-four percent. Similar to the previous conversations about the accounting, the budget cleanup, that, that strategic budget line items are being, they're being placed in the right, right, general ledger, the right account for our activity, as well as how do we summarize that activity here for this department as it relates to the other departments, including capital projects. Our Police Department, just under a fifteen-million-dollar budget through quarter three. They're at about ten point five million, which is roughly seventy-one percent spent. Our Public Works Department, which is comprised of several different divisions, a twenty-six point three million dollar adopted budget, and through quarter three, about an eighteen point two million dollar spend, or seventy percent, just under seventy percent. And if you look at all of our departments, all of our funds, that equals a twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget of a hundred and five million dollars. That includes the amendments that were included and approved by council in the past. Our quarter three spent for all departments, all funds, is seventy-nine point seven million dollars, which is roughly seventy-six percent spent. That is through seventy-five percent of the year, relatively on-track spending versus our budget. So that's where you see that summary slide there, all departments, all funds. And where do we go from here? Our next steps. So we are using this information to work with our departments to make sure that we end this current fiscal year as close to on-budget, depending if we're looking at revenues on or above budget, expenditures at or below budget. That includes making sure that all of our activity, all of our payments due to a partner, to a vendor, et cetera, that we have paying those on time. But also, all revenues that are due to the city are also either accrued, recognized, or received in, in the proper manner. And then continue to make these administrative changes through our existing policies that do provide some discretion to the city manager, to make changes that have no material impact to the budget, just to capture that accounting strategy and make sure that we're aligning with best practices there. Also, we gather all this information to plug it into our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, or the next budget. So all departments have met with our city manager and finance staff. We, we've kind of identified a, a baseline budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. We've included the feedback that we received at the goal-setting meeting that, from the city council. The next steps for that twenty-four, twenty-five budget will be a review, the first review by the city council at the June fourth meeting. That is a draft budget. We will receive information and, and feedback and direction from the city council. At that point, staff would work to put together a budget that'll be considered for adoption at the June eighteenth meeting.
And then Casey, I'd like to just jump in. So if you could go back to the slide before. So as we're going through the development of budget, I'd like to just reiterate a point that Casey mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. As we brought this budget forward to you last year around this time, and as we stated at that time, we went through a reevaluation of the budgeting process, looked at the actuals, looked at the, the revenue streams, and had some adjustments that, that were made when we brought that forward. So we looked at the historic trends. As Casey mentioned, as we went through that process of, you know, the defined balance budget is your revenues plus, you know, any fund balance that you bring, equaling your expenditures. And so that last budget, our current year budget, did have a dependency on general fund savings, on your fund balance. And so we're looking at that as part of going forward through this process of developing that budget. As we are developing that, some of the, the tenants of the budget development is looking not only at general fund, which is your discretionary, you know, essentially your discretionary pots of funding, where, not discretionary in the, in the terms of your discretionary policy, but where you're funding your, your police, your fire, your, your administrative staff, most of those offices. You also have your enterprise and special funds. And so as we look at those funds, we have to address funds that, you know, may have come in at a, where the revenues did not meet the pace of the expenditures, and so we have to evaluate that as well. And so we're developing a plan. When I bring that budget forward, it will have those tenants in mind as well. We are mindful of the historic inflation that we're going through. We are a municipal corporation, we're no different than any other business that is dealing with years of inflation post-pandemic. And so the plan that we'll be bringing forward will ensure the long-term stability to the budget. That's also mindful of scheduled one-time costs and equipment replacement. So working with the departments to provide those type of, you know, five-year plans, ten-year plans on equipment replacement, consumables, those types of things, and especially in the public safety side. Equipment wears out, OSHA standards change, and we need to make sure that, that we're mindful of that in, in the five-year and ten-year projections, rather than just when the year comes that we need something pivoting to try to, to ensure that we have those dollars for it. We'll also be looking at facility maintenance and improvements, rate stability amongst our funds, building strong reserves, fiscal prudency, all in alignment with our budgeting and procurement policies, or our budgeting policies, continued operational efficiencies, and also recognizing, like I said, the record inflation impacting department budgets. With an emphasis on council priorities, as well as the roads that we had discussed, the, the road projects that we had discussed at the last few meetings are actually out to bid right now. And those funds are earmarked for that and will be included as part of this budget, based on the timing of, of when contracts will be awarded and, you know, the first invoice coming in. One thing I do want to point out is, and let me just pull up my notes here. Recently, the state released, you know, they go through their, their budgeting process, where you have an initial budget released in January. They go through a process back and forth and have what they call the governor's May revision. And then ultimately, the, you know, the, 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 the state legislature has to pass a budget by June thirtieth. If not, they don't get paid. And so they're going through that process. The revised budget shows a twenty-seven point six billion dollar deficit. And although we are not like a, you know, most cities, their dependency on, especially smaller cities, their dependency on state funding is typically through your grant programs. You're applying for grants or discretionary, whereas some other, you know, especially on, you know, your social programs are more designed and built using those state funds. So what that, what that does is although that doesn't impact our budget directly, it impacts our residents directly. And by impacting our residents, that impacts discretionary funding. So Casey made mention of, you know, January and PG&E rates going up, right? So if a PG&E rate goes up by a hundred dollars for, for a resident, that's twelve hundred dollars, and that may be less discretionary fund, spending. So we have to look at it from, from, from that standpoint as well. So the state budget is going to result in cuts to CalWorks, which provides supportive services, home visits, and mental health, substance abuse services. And one-time cuts in employment services, so the state funds employment programs that, that help, you know, our residents. They're cutting programs that address homelessness and affect affordable housing. So those are some of those grants that we often try to, to go after. Delaying further expanding of childcare slots, various reductions in behavioral health, including cuts to infrastructure, housing, workforce, and youth initiatives, public health and health workforce, as well as some other programs that are out there. So those programs, our residents depend on those programs. And so although it's not a direct impact on our budget, we, we do need to be mindful of, of the impact. of of the impacts that that has just in the pocketbooks of our residents. And so I want to take a moment to thank the department heads for working through this process with us, as well as Casey and his team. And we look forward to bringing a budget forward to you for discussion in our June meetings as well. And we're happy to take any questions on the Q three budget or the Q three actuals.
Questions? Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple. And and so I couldn't help but notice that it looked like our parks department was somewhere between four and five million under budget at this point. And I know that there will be some catch-up that will occur, but I can't fathom that they're going to spend five million or four million dollars between now and July first. And so does that money then just roll back into the general fund?
So a majority of those funds are for the park construction, which would be funded by Prop sixty-eight. And so with those, you budget the revenue and the expenditure. If the expenditure hasn't occurred, we can't draw down the revenue. So essentially, we would budget that again. So we don't really see a savings because it's not a fun, it's not a general fund dollar. So you'll see that budgeted again. It's not like we're spending it twice. We didn't spend it, we're not pulling it, and we would contemplate that again going forward.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And and then currently, I believe this council approved from the last annual budget approval, a two million dollar rainy day fund. Has that been impacted at all or?
So the the formal rainy day fund that was last adopted by council was at three hundred thousand dollars. And then through budget discussions of the previous year, if my memory serves me correct, I think there was discussion going back from three million to one million.
And I think we landed on two. Councilmember Morales, I think, was the deciding factor in that case.
So if you're looking from a rainy day, which is actually a, a, a call out in our reserves, you have different classifications of reserves. For this year, it's at nine hundred thousand. So we will be looking at that as part of the budget development as well.
Okay. And then my final question is, again, we've had a conversation ongoing now for at least two years, as I recall, and maybe three, where I know our police department has been working on, with a consulting firm on creating some sort of a ask for a communications center that could be certainly citywide and potentially countywide to bring them back from Santa Cruz. And so that was going to be several million dollars. And so how do we set money aside to be prepared when that happens? Or how do we, how do we address that moving forward so that we are prepared?
So they are making an initial ask as part of the the budget. Typically, what we would do is do a, you know, we'd and and I know that they're looking at the study, but you would have, if you get to a point of plans, you're going to engineer those plans. And then what we would have to do is that would give us a better idea of the costs. And then we have a fund that we set up for general fund capital improvements, and we would need to make contributions to that fund. And so that's where you build it as a as a budgeting mechanism of each year, you put X amount of dollars into that. Now that's funds that are not available for other spending, but you're building that fund. And so that's how you would do that. The other piece you would do is those type of projects become tremendous candidates for grants and for state and federal requests as well. But assuming you've get you get no grant money, you're going to have to put dollars aside each year.
And I would assume that part of that discussion would be, as I recall, we pay Santa Cruz County several hundred thousands of dollars to provide this service on an annual basis. And so, well, there's an expense here, there's a cost savings there, and it gives us controlling factor as well.
That is correct. You just have to build it.
Right. No, I got you. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that hadn't fallen off the radar.
No, it is not. Chief Reynoso has has costs associated with that with the budget. And we would work together to do that cost benefit analysis and see how long it takes before, you know, the the savings you get pays off the building and what that looks like.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks for your answers. I appreciate it.
And if I may add to that, so we're also engaging in conversations with the police department about, you know, not only capital cost to construct that concept, what that would would look like and potential shares of those costs, but also for the operating side, should there need MOUs and what those calculations look like. So we've had all those conversations.
Perfect. Thank you again. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to go over a couple of your points, last budget depended on general fund. What does that mean exactly? And have we done that historically here?
Yes. So it is it is not uncommon to use fund balance, which is essentially the unspent money, speaking specifically about our general fund. So there was fund balance available, partially larger than typical because of the one-time federal funding. And then the city used that general fund fund balance to to balance our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which I noted was a a good practice to do in a one-time short-term budget practice. However, moving forward, that would not be our recommendation.
And I would assume historically, we haven't done that.
I, from the top of my head, it wouldn't be uncommon if things.
Yeah, historically, yes, but to not at the level of this year. And so that's what we're looking to to ensure that, you know, we get back to normal on that.
Okay. Twenty-six point six billion, not million, billion deficit from the state. That's what you said, right?
Yes. Twenty-seven point six is is what is being called out by the state.
Okay. And you already stated in your report that how it's going to impact our citizens here in the city of Hollister and other ways. I would assume that's going to impact the citizens in the county in the same similar ways as well.
Yeah, these are traditionally a lot of your social net programs, along with a lot of other programs.
Okay. So I read, and I saved this because I know we're talking about this, but I read that West Valley City faces multimillion dollar shortfall, and there was two, two reasons for that. Key factors, exasperating the next year's deficit problem. Number one, it was a drop in the sales tax. And the other... Well... The insurance. So and the living adjustments, cost of living adjustments to labor contracts. So I'm looking at here, the sales tax. It's a little sporadic for us. So I'm just assuming that the very last one is the last, what, quarter? What are we looking at here?
The the chart with the bar graphs?
Yeah. And I'm like, I'm looking at San Antonio County. It's just up and down. At one point, it was two, negative two point five zero. Then it was double, almost double that.
You're absolutely right. So this is looking at calendar year twenty-twenty-three with the far left column at the bottom of the sheet, quarter four, twenty-twenty-three includes October, November, December of twenty-three. And it's comparing that to the prior calendar year, which was the economy from the pandemic, which was absolutely a roller coaster. So we saw some spikes in certain industries of the cost of lumber, the cost of fuel hit spikes that were uncommon, not traditional economically. And then we see this, I'll call it a correction, that's a common word that economists use for that calendar year versus calendar year, absolutely.
Okay. So how are we anticipating doing as far as our city with those two issues? And aside from West Valley City, have you heard of any other trends in other cities happening that could be alarming?
Yeah, I think many cities are evaluating that and facing that. I think, you know, the state's so big that there's various economies within the state. Our projections for this upcoming year are relatively flat, and that's how we will be addressing them.
Okay.
But we did, we did see some growth this year.
Okay. And in regards to counties, have you heard anything about our county or any other surrounding counties? And do they have, do we have reason to be concerned on trends that we noticed going on at county levels?
I would assume that any county is concerned with the state budget at where it's at.
They're more dependent, I would say, on the state budget.
Yeah, the state, counties are a political subdivision of of the state, and so they operate programs on behalf of the of the state. So, you know, a state program is the unemployment department, right? EDD is operated by the state, but your, your, your CalFresh programs are then passed to the county to operate, right? So sometimes the county will operate a program, sometimes the state operates it. So those, the the counties are dependent, you know, significantly on what are called subvented funds. And so that's where anytime that the state budget is like this, the county is certainly going to have, you know, any county is going to have concerns when there is a state budget cut of any magnitude.
Generally speaking, we're about to adopt a budget here within, I forgot, a month, I guess, right? What would your message be to this council, generally speaking? Are we to proceed with caution? Do we have an influx of money coming in? I mean, we're talking about all these other CIPs, we're talking about giving to nonprofits, just generally speaking. You guys know what my stance has always been, but what do you think that how we should proceed, hearing all of that?
Yeah, I would proceed with fiscal prudence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One, one final question as we move forward to develop the budget. At our last council meeting, we had a fairly robust presentation, and it was quite clear that this city has been underwriting the fire service for the county at a significant expense. How do we prepare the budget moving forward while not knowing what that uncertainty is? Definitely with the county and to a significant but lesser degree with the city of San Juan Batista, because that's a significant amount of money at play, and we can't continue to underwrite those services, in my opinion.
So I'm in discussion as directed with with both the CAO and the city manager, and we've been having a good discussion, sharing data back and forth. So I would say that, you know, both sides have been responsive. As for a budgeting mechanism, I would not recommend budgeting anything at this time until we go through that process. Because if I budget those funds and they do not come in, then we could be in a, in a, have a big problem. Because if you budget those funds and then have an assumption that those are there and available to spend, and there is, you know, a delay, or you come to negotiations or a stalemate, or maybe the negotiations don't come in where we project, then you could have another shortfall that you would aim to prevent, so.
Right, right. And my my recollection is, we do have the ability to trigger a demand, and then we can walk from that contract within two hundred and seventy-one days, as I recall. So we're going to have to outlay that expense for at least nine months from the point where we reach impasse, if we were to reach impasse. And so really, the budget would be significantly impacted, not this coming fiscal year, but potentially the fiscal year after that, as I, as I sense, because we're contractually obligated for at least three-fourths of the year to provide that service. Is that correct?
That's a fair assumption.
Okay. Thank you.
They could always come to the table sooner and, you know, but, but from a, from a planning on having revenue to expend, I would not be comfortable until those, you know, till there's a deal on the table.
If I may add to that, there potentially could be twenty-four fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five implications. Should the council direct that two hundred and seventy-day notice? That would mean the expenses would potentially be ongoing. However, that revenue source would would go away in its entirety. So there could be twenty-four, twenty-five implications.
So just kind of piggybacking on that, talking about the fire contract, but we've also kind of discussed a little about animal control and services, that there may be a shift needed there. Are we going to be having discussions about with that contract or?
Yes, we had through the intergovernmental committee a request to basically take a look at shared services. And so both the CAO and the city manager of San Juan and I are are working to put something together for intergovernmental in August to bring that forward. So we're, you know, we're all, when that request came in to bring it back in a month, we we all asked for a little bit of time to get through, because we're all going through our own budgeting process. And so the intergovernmental was more than understanding of that, and so we're going to bring that forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a public comment on this?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
All right. Do we have anything further? Or did we? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, eight point three quarterly city council Brown Act training. Yay!
So hopefully, this isn't as painful as it sounds from the description. So along with our quarterly legislative updates, we wanted to start doing quarterly just short, mini little Brown Act highlights, maybe based on changes to the Brown Act, upcoming new laws associated with the Brown Act. And so this, we're going to focus on one or two topics each time, each quarter. And so Jen Thompson will be presenting this one on the use of social media and the new teleconferencing rules. So I'll turn it over to Jen.
Good evening again, Mayor Casey and city council. As Mary mentioned, I am going to be doing a relatively brief Brown Act training on social media and teleconferencing. We did choose these two topics because there is recent law, a recent, relatively recent new law on both subjects. So the the Supreme Court recently decided a pair of cases related to social media and the First Amendment, not the Brown Act, but I am going to weave that into because it's related and and also important. And then with the Brown Act and remote attendance, that law changed. It was the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two, I believe, but but it's also relatively recent. So these are the topics that I'll cover, starting with the Brown Act and social media. So just as a reminder, the intent of the Brown Act is to keep the public informed of the actions, debates, and views of locally elected representatives, and to provide the procedural framework to make sure that legislators meet, debate, act, and listen collectively to their constituents. It's also to ensure open government and fairness in local public agency meetings. Under the Brown Act, a meeting is any congregation of a majority of members of a legislative body at the same time and place. And this includes teleconference locations. It and anytime you're gathered to hear, discuss, or deliberate upon any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So there doesn't have to be any action taken or planned for a meeting to occur. Under the Brown Act's definition of meeting, any interaction between the city council and social media can also constitute a meeting and and be required to follow Brown Act meeting rules. In two thousand and twenty, the legislature passed AB nine-nine-two, and that bill defines discuss among themselves for for purposes of a meeting and for purposes of the Brown Act to include communications made, posted, or shared on an internet-based social media platform. And that includes comments, digital icons. In other words, it means, it could mean retweeting, forwarding, posting an emoji, or even clicking the like button. Those could all constitute a discussion among members of the city council on social media. AB nine-nine-two doesn't prohibit members of the legislative body from commenting on forwarding or liking posts made by members of the public if those comments don't become a discussion about city business among city council members. So really, the takeaways from this AB nine-nine-two is that a member of the city council may communicate with the public on matters of city business through social media, either by responding to a question, soliciting information. Neither of those things would constitute a violation of the Brown Act. However, when other, and even if other members can see that post, so even if other council members see that post, however, any social media interaction between city council members, including comments, emojis, retweeting, liking, any of those things, those could be, those could constitute a Brown Act violation. So moving on to the First Amendment and social media, as I mentioned, there was a pair of U.S. Supreme Court cases decided in March of two thousand and twenty-four. And in those cases, the court established a test for determining whether an official or or a government employee's actions on social media constitute a government action or a personal action. And that's a really important distinction, because if an official's social media use constitutes a government action, then any attempt to quiet speech on their social media platform could constitute a violation of the speaker's First Amendment right to free speech. So I'll just briefly go into the details of those two cases. The first is Lindkey versus Freed. So in that case, sometime before two thousand and eight, Freed created a private Facebook page for his personal use, which he eventually did make public. In two thousand and fourteen, he updated the page to describe himself as daddy to Lucy, husband to Jesse, and city manager, chief administrative officer for the citizens of Port Huron, Michigan. So Freed primarily used this page to post about his personal life. However, he also posted information related to his job, such as highlighting communications from other city officials and soliciting public feedback on issues of concern. Freed often responded to city residents who left comments, and he occasionally deleted comments that he considered to be derogatory or stupid. After the COVID nineteen pandemic began, he posted information related to the city's approach to the pandemic. Lindkey, who was the plaintiff here, commented on Freed's post and expressed his displeasure with how the city was handling the pandemic. And initially Freed blocked him or blocked just his comments, and then he ultimately blocked him from commenting at all on Freed's Facebook. at all on Freed's Facebook page. Lindkey ended up suing Freed alleging that Freed had violated his First Amendment rights by deleting his comments and ultimately, ultimately by blocking him from commenting at all. So the court acknowledged that Freed, as a city manager, didn't relinquish his First Amendment rights as a private citizen when he became the city manager. So they, they looked at the question as to whether, when he deleted the comments, was he acting as a city official or as a private citizen? If he had, if he were acting as a private citizen, he was exercising his own First Amendment rights. But if he were acting as a public official, and he deleted Lindkey's comments and he was, then he was violating Lindkey's First Amendment rights. So the court held that an official's actions constitute government action if that official possessed actual authority to speak on the government's behalf, and if that official purported to exercise that, exercise that authority when they spoke on social media. And the court did state that it's not enough that a person's actions look or function as a state action. The person must actually possess authority to act in that manner. And they relied on previous case law that found state action only where the person had actual state authority. In the other case, the one that was decided in conjunction with Lindkey v. Freed, this one is O'Connor-Ratcliffe versus Garnier, and this one is out of California, and it relates to the actions of two school board trustees. In that case, in 2014, Michelle O'Connor-Ratcliffe and T.J. Zane, they created Facebook pages to promote their election campaigns for the Poway Unified School District. Both individuals maintained separate personal Facebook pages. After being elected to the Board of Trustees, both trustees continued to, to use their same campaign Facebook pages to post school district-related content, including board meeting recaps, application solicitation for board positions, budget, surveys, and even public safety updates. And their pages even described them as government officials. O'Connor-Ratcliffe also created a Twitter page, which she used in a similar manner. The Garniers, their children attended Poway School District, and they frequently criticized the board members and the entire Board of Trustees. And they began posting lengthy and repetitive comments on the trustees' Facebook pages and Twitter pages. In one instance, they posted 42 nearly identical comments on O'Connor-Ratcliffe's Facebook page and 226 identical replies to every tweet on her Twitter feed within a 10-minute span. The trustees initially deleted those comments and then ultimately blocked the Garniers from their pages. And the Garniers sued the trustees alleging a violation of their First Amendment rights. The Ninth Circuit found that the trustees had met the state action requirement because there was a close nexus between the content of their social media pages and their, their official positions. The Supreme Court, though, remanded the case back to the Ninth Circuit because they want, they wanted it to be decided based on this, this new test that they had established in Freed v. Lindkey v. Freed. So ultimately, between the two cases, the, the test that the Supreme Court came up with was, it's two steps. And the first step is, did the public official have an actual authority to speak on the state's behalf? An actual authority can be established either by law or by custom. So if a city has a history of certain public officials making specific statements to the public, that public official may have the actual authority based on custom, not necessarily based on law. If the answer to this first question is yes, then the, the next step is to go to question two. If the answer is no, then there is no state action. But if it's yes, and you, the second question is, did the public official purport to exercise that authority when he or she spoke on social media? And some of the, the indicators that a public official has exercised their authority to speak on the state's behalf includes information only being available on the public official's website, or use of the social media page predominantly for city business and announcements. However, disclaimer stating that the page is the public official's personal page, or information on the page is their personal opinion, could indicate that the public official is not engaging in state action. And then the, the court did, did go on to say that the analysis is very fact and, and case-specific. So, for example, deleting a person's comments from a specific post would focus the analysis on that post, but blocking a person from an entire page would focus the analysis on the entire page. So we do have some recommendations related to social media, official use of social media pages that come from these cases. The first is to establish and maintain separate personal and official social media pages with clear designations of which is personal, which is official, to include a disclaimer on your personal social media page and posts relating to the city, just stating that the page is personal and doesn't express an official city position. And then if posting a, a city event or topic clearly identified that the post was previously, previously posted on the official city, social media page, and then just using a link to that official page. With that, I'm going to move on to the second topic, which is teleconferencing under the Brown Act. Again, this is relatively recent new law, so that's why we decided to cover this. So as you are likely aware, meetings can be held by teleconference as long as all of the requirements of the Brown Act are met. Teleconferencing means meeting in different locations connected by some electronic means through audio or video or both. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the California Legislature extended flexibility into the Brown Act to allow legislative bodies and their members to conduct agency business remotely. So the Brown Act now provides legislative bodies with three options for remote participation. There's traditional teleconferencing. There is remote attendance during a proclaimed state of emergency. And then through the first, January 1st, 2026, there are two exceptions, the just cause and personal emergency exceptions. And I'll go through each of those three next. So traditional teleconferencing requires that a quorum of the city council members participate from locations within the city's boundaries, and that each teleconference location be publicly accessible. Each teleconference location must have an agenda posted at the location and provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council directly at that location. And then all votes taken during a teleconference meeting must be by roll call. Assembly Bill 2449 allows members of the legislative body to use teleconferencing without identifying each teleconference location and posting the agenda at those locations, and making the, the location publicly accessible in certain circumstances, including a state of emergency. And a state of emergency is defined as an emergency proclaimed pursuant to the California Emergency Services Act. A city can conduct remote meetings during a proclaimed state of emergency without the need to comply with those other teleconferencing requirements under only two conditions. One is, the purpose of, of the meeting is to determine whether, as a result of the emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risks to health and safety, or the city has determined in a previous meeting that as a result of the emergency, meeting in person would present an imminent risk, risk to health and safety. So the city has to first make findings that meeting in person would present that imminent risk, and then it has to be passed by a majority vote, and then the council can use these emergency, emergency situation provisions. The authorization can be extended, and it has to be extended every 45 days if the council wants to continue meeting under this, this exception. And if the city council does conduct remote meetings during a proclaimed emergency, the public must be given notice and an opportunity to comment and to participate at meetings in real time, including by use of remote media. But, but they have relaxed the other requirements, as I mentioned, of relating to member participation, agendas, and public, public accessibility at those remote, remote locations. And then the last exceptions or exemptions are only valid, at least currently, through January 1st, 2026. And here, individual city council members can utilize additional exemptions. So those are the, and typically, they're in the case of personal, physical, or family medical emergency, or for just cause. So at least a quorum of the city council must meet in person when these exceptions are used. Council members participating remotely must participate both on camera and via audio. Also, before taking any action, the council member who's remote must disclose if anyone 18 years or older is in the room at the remote location with them. And then they also need to disclose the general nature of that person's relationship to them. Council members can not participate in meetings under this, these exemptions for more than three consecutive months, or for 20% of council meetings in one calendar year. So there are just some slight differences between the just cause exemption and the personal emergency exemption. The just cause is defined as caregiving needs, contagious illness, physical or mental disability, or travel while on official business of the city, or another local or state agency. Council members seeking to participate remotely for just cause should notify the city council as soon as possible, including at the beginning of the meeting, if that's as soon as possible, of their need to participate remotely. And then that notification needs to include a general description of the circumstances relating to their need to participate remotely. And members can only use this exemption, this just cause exemption, for up to two meetings per year. And then with personal emergency exemption, when, when council members want to participate under this exemption, they must make a request again as soon as possible, providing a separate request for each meeting they wish to attend remotely. And then the city council needs to make, also needs to take action to approve the request. So if the request isn't made early enough to, to actually get it placed on the agenda, the action to approve the request can still be taken at the beginning of the meeting. And this one also includes, needs to include a general description of the circumstances as to why the members participating remotely. For all of these exemptions, the council still needs to adhere to quorum notice, agenda requirements under the Brown Act. But unlike traditional teleconferencing, council members who are attending remotely don't have to open their remote location to the public or post the agenda at the location. And then lastly, the city council has to ensure that the public also has access to participate in the meeting remotely. So if the, any one city council member is attending remotely, that, that option also needs to be open to the public. And they have to be, have both audio and visual available under that option. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Do we have questions, Council? Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there's been two times that I can remember that Councilmember Morales teleconference in. One was on a plane to Puerto Rico, and I called that out, and we found that she wasn't supposed to be at the meeting. The second time was recently, and if you can go back to the traditional slide, Jennifer?
This one?
Right there. I asked the mayor if, what, on what, which one of these was Councilmember Morales zooming in from? And I was told that it was traditional. My understanding is that she was not within the city's boundaries. So that, to me, if I'm reading these laws, doesn't qualify as traditional. Am I misreading that?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with those circumstances, but with traditional teleconferencing, the, just the majority of council has to be within the city's boundaries. So the person teleconferencing doesn't necessarily have to be within the city's boundaries.
So for that meeting, if the majority of the council is within the city's boundaries, Councilmember Morales can be, I think she was in Sacramento at the time, and she could still zoom in to the meeting?
Yeah, assuming all of the other requirements are met.
And how long is this one in place?
Oh, no, this one doesn't have a sunset date. This one's been around for the longest, and I don't think there's any termination date. Is that what you're asking?
Yep. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I just have a couple quick ones, Jennifer, regarding social media. Had a couple of different instances, so I want to make sure to clarify. On one instance, someone had posted something, and a council member had replied under the post. And then I was tagged and asked to answer a question. And I didn't do it because I felt like we already had one council member responding, and I shouldn't respond because that would be a Brown Act violation. But can you clarify if, if it's, if it's not an item before the council, but it could be within the subject matter jurisdiction, should two council persons be commenting on the same thread?
No. I mean, if it's within the city's council, or within the city council's jurisdiction, whether they have the item before them or not, it shouldn't be discussed outside of a public meeting.
Okay. And then the second one, I have an official page. I do recaps from my, after every meeting, just kind of a Reader's Digest version for folks who can't be here. And I have had a council member post kind of critical comments and also post a video of himself. So that would also be a violation, or not?
I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the particular circumstances, so I'm not entirely sure. But like, so, I don't think that's necessarily.
So if the, if I'm doing a recap of the, the meeting, and I'm listing items that we discussed, and under that, a comment is made, and it kind of refers back to one of the items discussed, and makes comments and puts a video, is that a violation?
It could have been.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are my questions.
And then also, if you are tagged in additional posts, and it's not wise to respond for Brown Act violations, you could simply say it would be a Brown Act violation for me to respond, potentially.
So I would put a comment to that effect?
You're leaving it. Well.
I mean, I just sent a personal message to the person, said I really can't respond on this thread.
And that works, too.
Yeah, okay.
Preferred.
Thank you. So we really should just avoid each other's social media to not violate the Brown Act.
That's our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Any further deliberation? No? Okay. All right. Then let's move on to committee assignments. Councilmember Perez, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes. Is this committee and just community events, or just committee?
I think events go under informational.
Okay, got it. So the Monterey Bay Division will have a California budget briefing on Wednesday. So this will be the third one we've received so far. Tomorrow, we will have the California COG and S H C C Joint Legislative Day. We will be talking about transportation, the, the budget, the California budget, and Caltrans. On the cannabis, we have not met since our last meeting. We are waiting for a meeting with the user, end users. And we're looking forward to that. Apologies. And at our COG meeting, we have a lot of information. So we did ask the director to come back to city council. She's doing a roadshow to a lot of community stakeholders, including San Juan and the county. So she'll be dropping by, and she'll work with the city manager or city clerk on that. But we have, we are, we're going to be stop contributing funds to the local jurisdictions and, and focus that money on Highway 25. We are working on 101 and 25. There are additional funds that were allocated to do that work. There was some discussion on 156 and Union Road, which you see here today. And then we asked to set a special meeting to work on Highway 25, to develop a plan and some timelines in the, what, what funds will be required of that. So that will be hopefully scheduled soon.
Councilmember Burns, did you have any meetings?
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So the only thing I have is, I sit on the county's homeless task force, particularly the Safe Parking Committee. And what that is, is for folks who live in their cars, it provides a place for them to be able to park overnight safely.
be able to park overnight safely. And so we've been trying to find a location, and so far, we have not been able to find a, a specific spot where we could actually set up a safe parking project. So one of the things that we're looking into is, in Santa Cruz, they have a faith-based group, group that, coalition that does safe parking at various churches, and they take turns, and it's kind of in partnership with the city and, or the county. And so we're going to be talking with the community foundation director, Gary Byrne, who's very familiar with the program. And also, we may be reaching out to some of the local faith-based organizations just to see if there's interest of doing something similar. So that's, it just might be another way to tackle it and, and be able to provide some safe space for them. And that's all I have as far as committee reports. Do we have individual reports? Vice Mayor, did you want to start?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For informational reports, just two things. Councilmember Burns had asked if we could agendize an update on 156. I think that's good. I definitely support that. And then I'd ask that, since we're going to have COG here, or Caltrans here, that they should report back on Highway 25 at the same time. For the parent who was calling about the after-school program, I think the least we can do is look into the issue and then just write a letter to the school district to urge them to take action or to consider taking action on how they can support those parents, because this is something I have heard other parents being concerned about. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, ma'am. So again, just a couple items. I would like to bring back to council for consideration the Del Certo request for an extension on impact fees, to better understand what the request is, and I know that that would require a council request, so I'm making that request. I also would like to maybe find out what capacity, if any, the city may have to providing after-school programs. I know some parks and rec departments do some, and we may already do some that I'm just not familiar with, but I would like to look more at that, and particularly as we're going into budget, to see if there's a way to supplement, augment, or work with the school districts for those. It is tragic when people at that, just that awkward place called the middle class, fall above one line but can't make it work. And I, I, I'm dumbfounded why anybody would say to quit your job. To me, that's like, that's ludicrous. I just can't even imagine the frustration that person expressed and was clear to me. That's very troubling to me. And, and again, I would agree with Councilmember Vice Mayor Rosales that probably be good to have some sort of a conversation with the schools to see what their thoughts are. It just seems like a flawed thought to me. Would like to start the process. In the past year, as I recall, the city, through council direction, bought a building near the post office to put future offices in, and as I understand, we're actually using that building for some staff currently. My recollection is that's really going to be a focal point for community development. And I would like to offer up in advance some of my soon-to-be-approved discretionary funds, assuming the budget goes through. I would like to name that building after Frank Valenzuela, one of our former mayors who we lost recently, and as I recall, the first Hispanic mayor elected to the city. And so I would like to put a memorial, a monument sign up and name the building after him. It seems to me to be a perfect thing to name after somebody with his history. And I know this takes time, I know it takes money, and so I'm willing to put my discretionary money up. I'm speaking for money in the future. And so I'd like council support to move that, that process forward as well. And I think I'll stop with that. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Perez?
Nothing to report.
Nothing today. Councilmember Morales?
Yes, I forgot one thing on COG. We also had the transportation survey, and basically, the bottom line was that there's some issues with reliability and predictability, so we're going to have more information on that. Was able to attend the Youth Alliance. They are, they, they have a new space, and it's in the county, close to District 3, I think between District 3 and District 2, so that's very exciting. I also was able to attend Every Child in California. They talked about the budget and the elimination of significant funding related to childcare, which I was also joined by Robert Reeves's office in, in those discussions, and looking at the reimbursement and the, and the local impact that it will have to our community, economic development, and just people's ability to, to, you know, have jobs and do things in life. I do want to follow up on the findings of the investigator. That was the letter, at least that was sent to me, to agendize that for next steps and follow-up. Mayor? That is all I have.
I don't know that I have much to add. I do agree with Councilmember Burns about bringing the Del Certo extension requests back and agendizing it. Also, with regard to the speaker that, that talked about the YMCA and Saravista, I've also been reached out to a couple of times now. And from what I understand, there's a grant, an ELOP grant, that came into the school district. But because it serves specific populations, it's pushing out folks that are already in the YMCA, and they can no longer participate, so they have no childcare. So it is a big issue. I think it's really tough to find good childcare here, and now, if they're being shut out of the YMCA, that takes a big piece of the market away. So I, I would agree with the idea of writing a letter or trying to find out more and possibly having the city write a letter to, to see what can be done, if there's some way to still include them without violating any terms of the grant. And I think that's it.
Okay, so just to circle back, 156 update and COG update. I formally heard two yeses, but I think through the course of the discussion, I saw heads nodding, so. After-school, talking with the school, and also, you know, whatever those findings end up being, writing a letter to, to whomever that may be the right place to write that letter to. I'm under the same understanding, it's a grant eligibility thing in the capacity of the organization. I've heard two, two requests to have Mr. Del Certo's item come back, so I've seen, seen consensus there. As for 190 MAPLE, we, a few meetings ago, you approved on-call architectural service, so they're working with William and his team on, you know, analyzing the building for space, ADA, all of those types of things, as well as, you know, how we could get the most effective usage of the building and still be in compliance with all, all the state laws. As for the naming, so there is a naming policy, so we could, you know, I could work with the council member on the, the formal policy of naming it, and then if there is, if that gets support, and then there's costs associated with that, then we could work, you know, through the discretionary process of approved. Councilmember Morales asked for agendizing an investigation. I want to pass that to, to Mary.
Right, so I was just checking quickly to see if that's something the council brings forward, or something the mayor brings forward currently. The Code of Conduct said, says it is the responsibility of the mayor to initiate action if a council member's behavior may warrant sanction. And so that was the basis for the investigation, but there's nothing further, so I would recommend council consensus to bring it back.
Thank you.
So, no, really quick, point of clarity. So according to the rules, there was a complaint issued to the mayor by Councilmember Morales against me. There was an investigation that occurred, and that was that.
Correct. And I think the request is that the results of that investigation be brought back out in public.
Okay. And why was it when another council member had the same thing, that wasn't brought out in public?
I think that involves specifically staff, and we explained at that time why.
Okay. All right. So just so we're clear, this council, with your leadership, wants to bring that back to have a further discussion about it?
Yes, similar to what we did with Councilmember Perez when we brought his investigation forward and had a discussion, so.
Let's do it.
And that's the end of the items that needed consensus.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to closed session. City clerk, do we have public comments on closed session?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for any of the closed session items.
Okay. City attorney, would you please announce the closed session items?
Yes, Mayor. Item one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency designated representative, city manager David Maroney, and administrative services director Casey Astorga. Employee organizations, service employees International Union SEIU Local 521, Hollister Firefighters Union HFFU Local 3395, Hollister Peace Officer Association HPOA, and unrepresented employees and classifications designated as executive management. Item two, conference with legal counsel liability claims, Government Code Section 54956.95. Claimants Maria Mendez, Melissa Solis, Patricia Castro, and Yaneth Solis, agency claimed against, City of Hollister. Item three, conference with real property negotiators per Government Code Section 54956.8. Property 25,466 square foot, public right-of-way located on McCray Street, south of Park Street and east of Prospect Avenue in Hollister, California. Agency negotiator David Maroney, city manager, negotiating parties Toro Petroleum, under negotiation price and terms.
Thank you. Then we are going to adjourn to closed session.